Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome to Bruce Towns' Board of Trustees meeting for Wednesday, September 21st, 2022. Can we get a roll call, please? Lisa.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Ms. Craft?
Here.
Mr. DeGiorgio?
Here.
Mr. Philbrook?
Here.
Ms. Crafty?
Here.
How about the room? Everybody stand up for the pledge leaders.
The flag is on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, we'll get started. First item, consent agendas, anybody had a chance to take a look over the consent agenda? If so, do they have any deletions or additions that they wanted to make?
I'd like to pull out two of the invoices. One of them for Michigan's security system, add that to as item L. I've got some more information just this afternoon, and I'd like to share with you before we move ahead with it.
Where is that at? Which one?
I'm adding it to...
You want to pull out one of these?
Yeah, I remember that. I didn't look up the number.
Is that from Michigan?
It is not specifically invoice necessarily because I might have to... It's different than it was going to be than what we discussed, than what we approved. It was eight thousand something.
So, we approved Michigan's security systems at our last month's meeting, but it was for $7,900 if I'm not mistaken?
Right, and it was... Oh, sorry. Let me see. It was for...
Use your microphone.
I have two new ones that we'll... I'll just talk about them and we'll get to L. The first one was 761005 was what we approved, but they sent me an updated invoice that was a month or more old, and then we've talked... Well, I can talk about it when we get there.
Okay, sounds good.
I don't see anything in here.
So, are we putting that under unfinished business?
Six B? We can do that. We can do it that way.
Mike, it wasn't an item last month. It was an item that we... Well, we did... We didn't pay for it, but it is an item that should have been in the minutes that we voted on.
Right, this invoice for this to go out. The check is ready to go, but I just want to... I just wanted to talk about the attorney fees, that bill. I... We haven't talked about the agreement with Romeo, and it's already gone to the attorneys. So, I don't know if anybody else has seen. I think, Mike, you've seen the new agreement, the suggested agreement.
So, the agreement is drawn up between the two attorneys, the one for the works of the village of Romeo, and the other one that would work for us, obviously, which is Seibert and Deloski. In order for us to have a clean document or a document that we can actually look at, and we feel is basically, you know, something that's legitimate to look at, I guess it's the reason why we have our attorney take a look at it and go over it, and they kind of go back and forth. And between the two of them, then they come up with a final document, which we then would present to our board or for us to look at, maybe either approve or disapprove.
But I think usually we would see it first and then decide.
Which agreement are we talking about?
We haven't seen it yet. I just know it's just because I've got a...
Sewer and water contract?
I've got a four-year capacity from the village.
Is this the amendment to the existing ordinance?
It would be amendment for additional capacities.
Additional capacity? It's not for the rates?
Should we put it under new business instead of discussing?
Well, no, so I'm just saying, I mean, we've got the bill, so we have to pay it. But I'm just saying from now, we really should talk about things before they get to that point. And the other thing was that Christine called and mailed on and wanted, I think it was unfair to Mike, asked him to enforce their ordinance or our ordinances in the village, and so we got charged from our attorneys to consider that when they should be enforcing their own. So, that was kind of unfair to Mike to ask him to do that, and that went to our attorneys too. So, I don't know. Should we go onto their attorney or...
These guys don't understand. Maybe you can explain in a little more detail.
So, there is a fee for... We went to Seibert and asked about the ordinances enforcing our ordinance in the village. Christine wants him to do that, and they enforce their own rules, their own ordinances. We're two separate entities.
Yeah, we don't have any jurisdiction.
Exactly.
So, the reasoning behind it basically was it was because political signs were being placed up earlier than they should have been. They had a certain amount of time when the political signs needed to go up, not any earlier. Political signs were going up earlier since it was a political thing, and we take care of the village of Romeo's voting or whatever. They felt that it was our responsibility to go ahead and enforce the political signs going up earlier, but that's why I made the phone call to Bob Seibert.
What she could have done to her attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a $30 charge from our attorney to basically clarify things for us.
So, that's going to be C on the unfinished business or...
No, that's not... It won't be discussed.
Right. I'm just mentioning it, so...
All right.
Okay, that's all I have. Sorry.
I just have a question on 3E.
Repeat that, Mike?
3E, the loan of $33,000 from General to Water.
Yep.
It appears that the loan amounts are consistent with what they've been or higher. Is this considered the rate increase? I would anticipate that the rate increase would have reduced our sub... Or our loan.
Yeah, 2,000 of that is a rate increase, the monthly charge, reoccurring monthly charge that they charge us.
Yeah, but I would anticipate that the loan amount would go down since we approved the rate increase.
But that hasn't gone into effect yet, right? With the new quarter, the new rate increases?
Well, we voted and approved it, but it's up to the...
But it hasn't been collected yet.
Right, still not being collected.
Okay, so this does not reflect the new rate? Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
When are those rates going to go into effect?
They have. They have when we've done the billing.
Okay.
So, the next quarter will reflect it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm good. I think we want to... You want to make an amendment to the agenda, right?
Yeah. So, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the addition of B and your new unfinished business.
And what are we going to call it?
The security, Michigan's security systems invoice.
And we're not adding on the attorney fees for additional conversation?
I don't know if you want to. I think we...
No.
Okay.
No reason to. Okay, motion by Susan to go ahead and approve the consent agenda as amended?
Well, wait, wait, wait. Did anyone get a thing in their mailbox called proposed agenda item?
Yeah.
We all got it. I made a copy of it for everybody. It was in a suggestion box.
Yeah, should we edit?
I mean, it's a letter. We're not really... Are we reading letters or... I mean, we can discuss if you... It's up to you, Mike, if you want to make the motion, I guess.
I thought a decision was made not to read letters a while back, one. Two, that was in the suggestion box from an employee. It has no name on it, no nothing. So, I think that should be a leadership issue. That should be addressed with the employee and the bargaining unit, the union of the employer.
I would agree.
And I can tell you that we have been in the process of doing the Adobe. We're working with the fire department, and so I don't know what that's about. We're ready to go on it. I think we purchased them, so...
Okay. I think that this would be more something to be discussed at the... Maybe at the employee workshop meeting.
I'd agree with that.
Did you have anything else, Mike?
I guess from a fiscal standpoint, I would be concerned that we didn't have an end date for that position. It seemed like it was a temporary position.
We did have an end date.
We did?
Yeah.
What was it?
We didn't vote on one, but I have one in mind. I mean, we have lost...
Oh, yeah, we didn't. When the board approved it, there was no end date.
Yeah.
But it was... But it was brought up that she would be needed the rest of the year because of so many elections going on.
Four elections this year.
So, leadership is addressing the end date?
Yeah.
Is that what's on here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got one thing.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify one thing in a minute before we go ahead and approve it. Last meeting, there was an issue, an item that was brought up in regards to approval for a pump at our wastewater treatment plant at Romeo, at the village of Romeo. It was 15... So, basically, the minutes basically stated that the...
What page are you on, Mike?
What's that?
What page?
On page one, the top front page of the minutes from August 17th, 2022. It was about the wastewater treatment plant, the pump replacement. There was no dollar amount stated at the meeting in September of 2021. And I did go back and did replay the meeting, and it did state the amount, but the unfortunate thing was that the amount was never added into the minutes. So, we had to re-approve to replace that pump after we'd already approved it back in September of 2021.
Was the cost consistent, Mike?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Susan, I had a brief text exchange regarding the minutes from the special meeting on August 10th, and my concern was that the minutes are not... They don't reflect any high-level items that were discussed. It just says BRF debargaining, but there were specific topics that were listed, and I just wondered if it might be more informative if we added those.
I think it's especially hard to get because that's a bargaining... We're bargaining with them. I don't, you know, we have to be cautious about what we put out there to protect the union.
But it was a public meeting, correct?
No, it was supposed to be closed, but nobody came, so we never closed it.
But we never went into closed session?
Right, because nobody else was here, so they didn't request it.
Okay, I'm confused. I would say that if we have something that should go into closed session, we should officially go into closed session regardless if there's anyone here.
Well, right.
Because this was confusing to me. Because I remember there were specific items discussed, specific actions that were supposed to be taken. In fact, one of them got resolved, I saw through some email exchanges, so... Okay, I'll defer to you. I would just say in the future then we should... If it's going to be closed, we should state it as closed and go into closed, yeah.
There is another item in the minutes from the wastewater treatment plant pump repair that there was a separate invoice for the replacement of that pump, which was $3,400, and was also, I think it was inserted in our board packet last month. This is the invoice from Kirk Pump at 3,485. And again, that was... Since it was done at a later date, that was also approved back in the minutes on... What's the date? February, February 2022. At 2 minutes and 1... 2 minutes or 2 hours and 1 minute 30 seconds in the meeting, we did approve to install the wastewater treatment plant pump as motion by Philbrook, supported by Crafty to approve the pump installation at a cost of 3,485. So, again, that was also already voted on and approved back in February 2022, and we also had it in our agenda last month meeting, so just want to make sure that's clarified So, that's part of our minutes from last month, so I'm good with the minutes. Okay? Anybody have anything else at all? Not there's a motion by Susan to go ahead and approve the consent agendas?
Second.
Second by Frank?
As modified, correct?
What was that?
As modified.
As amended, yeah, modified. Can we get a roll call? Lisa, please?
Yes.
Lisa, right.
Craft?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on, this is a time when we come to hear comments from the floor. So, we would like to, if you did come up to the podium, we'd like for you to state your name, your address, and we would like to keep your comments to a minimum, a maximum of three minutes. We'd like for you to address any of your questions directly to me and then if you choose, so choose to answer them, then we will, but at this point in time, does anybody have any comments that they want to make at the podium?
I'd have a suggestion, suggestion point of order. We have this public comment policy, and you just addressed part of it, but we haven't consistently enforced it. I would suggest that we have a timer.
Does anybody?
If we could.
It actually says now 3 to 5. We amended that, so it does give you the discretion, but just for...
Correct.
Yeah.
Does somebody want to be responsible for keeping time at the board?
If I can figure out how to use this as a timer, I will. Let's see.
I'll do it.
You got it figured out?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Teresa, go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you. Teresa Smith, Covered Bridge. My comment is for the fire department. Can you hear me?
No.
Okay. Wait. Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay. Mine is for the fire department, and it's specifically, I just want to address Eileen at the fire department. I needed a wheelchair a week and a half ago, and I happened to call here right when she was getting off duty, and she was kind enough to stay till I got here and let me use that wheelchair so I could take my dad to a baseball game, and I wanted to publicly thank her for that because she went over and above. She did not have to stay, but she did it on her own time and with a smile. Thank you, Eileen.
That's nice.
Thanks, Eileen.
I just say, by the way, that introduced Lisa Hall. She's doing our minutes for us now. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Is there any other residents who want to make a comment at all? Greg? No?
Why not?
Talk about their T-shirt.
Yeah. My name is Greg Ewart. I'm at 7401 Julius Drive in Cloverfield Village. First, I want to thank Mike, who's... When we lost the water, I kind of saw him out there playing around with a fire hydrant, so I approached him to find out what was going on, but he's been keeping me in the loop, and I've been the one that's been updating the, our Facebook page. So, now you know who I am. I will have another update tonight. I don't know if you want me to bring it up here.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Apparently, somebody flushed a T-shirt, a very bright blue T-shirt, down a toilet, probably. It clogged up one of the lift station pumps?
Correct.
For the sewer and cost $1,500 worth of damage. So, I will put that out there on Facebook just to remind people, probably like when I was little or younger, kids throw stuff in the toilet. It happens. Surprised it wasn't a stuffed animal because that's what I used to get, so... But I... The thing I, you know, want to say here is, you know, in the subdivision, I know Mike's done a lot to try to tell people to stop watering, but if you travel through that subdivision, and some of you folks in here will know, drive around, everybody's watering their lawns, some people three times a day still. So, our water pressure, at least I'm first house, the other day was trickling out of the shower. So, I don't know if that... You guys meter it, so I assume we're okay from the drinking perspective.
Right.
So, I think that's the important part. And the other thing I wanted to bring up, are we done or is the city township done providing water?
So, absolutely not. The chief, what did chief bring up today on that?
Okay.
Fire chief and the fire department's been working pretty much hand in hand, you know, with getting everything taken care of. Go ahead, chief, why don't you?
Yeah, no, so we have water availability for you guys until we get the all-clear, which is truly after like September 21st.
Okay, so you do have water for us?
We do.
Okay.
So, put that on your Facebook.
I will. I will. I went last Friday and actually pulled in the back, called the number, and they said they no longer have water available for residents.
Yeah, yes, we do.
Okay, you do?
We have water, yeah.
Okay.
And if we need more, we can get more.
Okay.
Because the county has like a cache of it still, so...
All right. And we're going into now October sometime, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
That's all I have.
Yeah, hopefully by October 5th, they'll have this thing corrected, you know?
Okay.
The new briefing that they sent out, so...
Okay.
Appreciate all you guys' patience and your willingness to cooperate, so thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. We need to keep time, okay? Okay, we'll move on to hearings and reviews. I don't think we have any hearings and reviews, so we're good there. We'll move on to item number six, which is unfinished business. So, we'll talk about the ARPA funds first. Frank, did you want to go ahead and take that?
It's up to you.
Yeah, you've been kind of handling it all along, I think, right? The cable?
Between Susan and I, we've both been counting it under her, so...
You're telling me to put my mouth shut? What are you doing?
All right, Greg. Yeah, don't worry about it, Greg. Just give it a rest.
So, Susan, you could probably talk better to this. It just talks about the deposits that we received and then the expenses that we've incurred while getting the things, purchasing the things that have been necessary. And it shows on the bottom the balance of where we're at after everything's done.
And for the cable funds.
Yeah, and the cable funds. So, out of that 110, we've used that for all the specified items. That was a total of 63,000, and we're down to a balance of 46,000. The ARPA, as you can see, there was $502,000 that was spent, and we have 294,062.2.
Okay.
We just thought you'd all want to know. Update.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the update. Thank you.
We've had a number of ARPA meetings with priorities, and then it seems that we approve things kind of one-off. So, I'm a little concerned that if we're going to do this, we ought to look at the complete list and the priorities so that we don't lose sight of what we did prioritize. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we can meet again. Certainly, I do agree with that, but I think we kind of, I don't know.
I don't think we've purchased anything out of the priority list. I just think that it doesn't look like plan.
There was a couple of things, like the doors were... That's going to be in the presentation.
Yeah.
Security system, things for the fire department.
Wait a second.
Yeah, the workout stuff for the fire?
Right.
Fire people? What else? Well, it's all specified right there.
Drinking fountain.
The drinking fountain, Powell Road project.
And then, I guess, from an accounting standpoint, I haven't seen any budget amendments, and I think we need to do budget amendments, and I'm not sure of what the plan was. Do you know what the plan was from Rhonda?
No, Rhonda's big. She's been kind of in and out, so...
Oh.
So, I was going to say, and we're about the six-month period into the fiscal year, so I was going to sit down with Rhonda and go over the budget to see where we actually are at, you know, with the budget and, you know, but there has been a lot of different issues this year that's kind of reflected on the budget itself. Some issues were not at 50%, some issues were over 50% obviously through the fiscal year. So, absolutely, I think it's something to look at. I'm going to get with her on that, so... Thanks for keeping track of that, Susan and Frank. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, these item 6B would be the security cameras.
So, we approved the 7610, and this invoice came in a little higher. It's the 8,8900 actually. When we talked about this, Dave wasn't here, we talked about doing the key cards and the cameras out back, so I thought we better make sure that we're all on the same page on that, and I wanted to discuss this amount. Then the second page I gave you, which is 11, and I just got this today, otherwise I would have put it in the packet, is 11,000 because now, as long as we're, if we're doing these two fire stations, we might as well be doing the third one, or Station 2 as well. So, I don't know if that works for you all. We just kind of approved it without any input.
Yeah, I think it should be done.
So... So, this is just the second one is higher because there are more cameras, two of them. I think he's doing free, but adding more key cards and the strike, door strikes.
So, the second one is fire station 3?
This is the total of the 11,000 is include is everything.
Oh, our building and the fire stations?
Yes, all the fire stations. And also, we have two cameras here that he can use. They're fisheye lenses, so they're a little different. They're, I guess, pretty good cameras, so we can reuse those if you want to save some money that way. I don't know how much it'll be, but that was an option he gave me today.
We approve this... I know this is the same company we approved last, at our last board meeting with all the other information in front of us in our board packet. We did approve Michigan's security system for 7610, and that would have been, there was two proposals. One of them was the lower amount and one was the higher amount, and the lower amount now it's 8954.
This, the 89 is the one we chose, but when he, you know, there's some time lapse and...
Right, $1,300?
Yeah.
So, I mean, the only issue I've got with that is that $1,300 difference. All of a sudden, we approve them at $7,600, and we looked at two other security companies that maybe would be cheaper than the 8954. How unfair is that to them, I'm thinking, you know? I mean, I like the... I think that we're still within, you know, probably the right amount.
That's why I didn't want to go ahead with it without bringing it back to, because that was, I mean, it's within the $2,000 range, but still.
So, he didn't technically add anything with, for the additional $1,300. He just did an increase in the price of...
Right.
After we approved it already. Anybody else have any thoughts on that at all?
What's your recommendation, Susan?
I think we should move forward. I think that as long as we're doing these...
With which one?
Well, I think as long as we're doing these two fire stations.
Want to do the third one?
We should do that one, too.
What's your thoughts on the key fabs?
I think it's a good idea.
Actually, key cards.
But we have the key code out there, but, you know, so many people are already familiar with what it is.
Anybody?
Key Fab will give you more security.
Does anybody not know the code?
Right. That's what I'm saying.
That would have been changed.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the cards are the way to go. Everybody has their own ID card, and it can be programmed. Correct me if I'm wrong. If somebody is let go or something, you can go in the computer program and disconnect them so they can't leave the building, and it happens instantly.
So, are we approving a new amount versus the 7,600? That's what this is?
Yes, and this is, this 11 is a new amount in that we're, was increased, but also the Station 2.
It doesn't specify the locations at all, but you got that broke down from the same company?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you want to make a motion?
I just kind of threw this in at this afternoon because I knew I was going to have to bring it up, the addition, and I thought we might as well talk about that as long as we're doing these two stations, so...
Okay.
If everybody's okay with it, I'd like to make a motion to approve Michigan's security systems at 11,379,000 dollars.
For Mike Frank? Is there any other discussion?
It should be noted that this is a replacement for the prior approval, right?
Yeah.
Not in addition to.
Right.
What's it saying?
And I'll work with him on these other cameras and see if we can use them and bring the price down low.
So not to exceed?
Right.
Okay.
Not to exceed, Lisa, sorry.
Not to exceed eleven thousand three-hundred-and-seventy-nine?
Yeah.
You still second that motion?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just looking at the minutes from last month, how it was worth to approve the Michigan security. Basically, pretty much just says that for seventy-six-ten oh five. Do we have any other discussion? Um, can we get a roll call, Lisa, please?
Yes, Craft?
Yes.
To Georgia?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to, um, new business, item seven A, uh, Fire Department, new hires. I think we're going to wait on during one of their.
She texted me like right at seven, said she was leaving school.
Is the other new hire here? So we have two new hires, don't we?
Yeah, they're going to come together. There was no sense doing them separate.
Right.
So when, when do one leave school?
Okay.
She was going to text me when she was close, so we'll sneak it in when we can. Thank you.
All right, so we'll, we'll move on to our item seven B, which is our audit, audit presentation from Mr. Jordan Smith from Manor and Custerz, Tusterzian, Tusterzen. I know that's not right, but.
Impressive compared to most.
Okay, thank you.
Maynor Custerzen. Uh, Jordan Smith here. Uh, I'm a senior manager with Maynor Custerzen. I was the in charge on the audit this year. Um, I really need to thank, well, Rhonda and Dana weren't here, Bob's not here, but Frank and Susan. Um, talked to Mike a little bit, but Frank, Susan, and the rest of the township staff, uh, they really helped us. Without them, we can't get our job done to do the audit, and so, thank you very much. We appreciate it a lot. You should have some kind of a presentation packet in front of you, along with, uh, bound financial statements. Um, I'm really going to go through the packet. Um, the support for the, um, packet goes, is in the bound financial statements that will be issued to the state. Uh, on the first page two of the packet is the independent audit report, just a little summary. So it was rearranged this year, so the opinion paragraphs are at the top. If you were to actually read the whole letter, this is just a little summary here. "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects as of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and the respective changes in the financial position for the year then ended." That's a clean, unmodified opinion, the best possible opinion there is. So, that's really positive. Uh, the second part there, "Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements." So that's management's responsibility. Ours is the auditors, is our responsibility is to express opinions on these financial statements based on our audit. It's not to detect fraud, it's not to give an opinion on internal controls. If we note things, we bring it to your attention, um, but overall, we can give a clean, unmodified, the financial statements are reliable. Going to the next page, page three, just government-wide financial statements. I'm not going to get too much into this. This is like a full accrual, like you'll see for a for-profit or a nonprofit oftentimes. Um, on the next page, statement net position, snapshot as of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, so just under six months ago. Um, township's assets, for outflows of resources, liabilities. So one of those things we look at is the current ratio. Your current assets over your current liabilities. Um, at March thirty-first, the governmental activities had a four-point-seven, so your current assets covered your current liabilities about four-point-seven times. So that's healthy. However, your business-type activities were at a negative three-point-five. So the current liabilities were larger than the current assets, which I heard you guys talk about rate increases, stuff like that. I'll talk about, a little bit about that here in a second, so, not as good. There. Um, skipping to the next page. If you've got questions, please ask them. I, I go kind of fast, and I know I go kind of fast, but, um, change in schedule of employers' net, uh, pension liability. Um, this is actually net OPEB liability. I said the wrong thing. I apologize. So that OPEB liability, um, at year ended, March thirty-first, that liability is about four-point-five million, which is up about two-hundred thousand over the prior year. There's different reasons for that, discount rates, different things that go on, actual assumptions that increase that rate year-over-year. So, um, at twelve thirty-one twenty-one, it was seven percent funded. Twelve thirty-one twenty-two, it's nine percent funded. So even though the liability is more, the township put more money away, so it is now funded a little bit more. The focus per the state should be to hit forty percent funded. That's what the Department of Treasury is aiming for. They want all municipalities to be a minimum forty percent funded, and the township is currently nine percent funded. Going to page six, talking about the statement of activities here. The governmental activities, your general fund, fire, stuff like that, um, that increased one-point-one million to, uh, eight-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars. So that's very, very, or, it improved it, so it's unrestricted, eight-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand. There's other stuff in there, too. Um, however, the business-type activities decreased about ten thousand dollars. So year-over-year went down just slightly there. Going to the next page, just page seven, talks about where the governmental funds are. Pages thirteen through eighteen in the boundary report, if you were looking at the boundary report, pages thirteen through eighteen. First page, page thirteen, is a snapshot as of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and the governmental's at, the governmental funds. So focusing on the general fund there. Um, the general fund's total fund balance was one-point-six million, and there's five possible classifications. They're non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, or unassigned. So we look at this a number of different ways, but one of the ways we look at this is the unrestricted. That's the committed, assigned, and unassigned. Combine those, which you will only have unassigned, but over your annual expenditures. So in the general fund, that unassigned number is one, just under one-point-five million. Um, the unassigned to be used for whatever the township board decides in the general fund there. The expenditures for fiscal year ending March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two was one-point-six-nine million. So for the general fund only, you're at about eighty-eight percent. So you could operate for about eighty-eight percent of the year without taking another dime. That's one way to look at it. Um, the GFOA, Government Finance Offers Association, recommends two months of operating expenses be there. It's about seventeen percent. We're accountants. We like being conservative, so we'd say, you want to be more minimum twenty, twenty-five percent there in the general operating, you're at eighty-eight percent. So from the general operating standpoint, that's fairly healthy. That's a good position to be in there. Skipping to page nine, again, general fund here. Um, total revenues for the year were a little over one-point-eight million. It was an increase of about a hundred-and-forty thousand or eight percent over fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Uh, large charge for services increased about forty thousand dollars due to cemetery lot sales, things like that. And then intergovernmental increased a hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand or twenty-five percent. A significant part of that is state shared revenue coming to the township. People are traveling more, sales tax, spending money, and then the state passes that along to the township. So that's why the intergovernmental increased significantly. Expenditures were one point, uh, just under one-point-seven million, as I previously stated. This was actually an increase of about fifty-eight thousand or four percent. And that increases, there was a scanning document trying to electro, scan in, electr, I won't call it electrify documents, but, you know, make those documents electronic. So that's fifty-two thousand. There's additional cemetery maintenance and some roadwork, um, purchase of vehicles, uh, and, uh, office equipment, um, and then, but that was offset by not contributing to the OPEB trust like the year before of over a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. So in the end, um, expenditures increased fifty-eight thousand or about four percent. That left a change in fund balance of about a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars that increased. So general fund increase, you're added to your equity, your bottom line there. Um, page ten shows a five-year, uh, you can see the flow there. Blue is the revenue, red is expenditures, and green is that, is the fund balance, your equity. Um, just a trend so you can see how things are. Uh, all but one year, you can see revenues over expenditures in the general fund, your main operating fund, so that's a positive situation to have. Uh, twenty-twenty was the only year that expenditures were over revenue. Moving on to page eleven. Um, in your general fund, this is a breakdown by percentage of the various, um, revenue sources. So you can see taxes were twenty-eight percent, intergovernmental, including that state share revenue that increased was forty-nine percent. Um, that includes, intergovernmental is any federal dollars, state, local, stuff like that. But that forty-nine percent is an increase of, from twenty-twenty-one, when it was forty-three percent. So it went up about six percent. Again, I mentioned state share revenue increased pretty significantly. Um, property taxes, on the other hand, is a percentage decrease from thirty-one percent down to twenty-eight. Really, it's just offset because intergovernmental increased so much, the state prop, state shared revenue. Page twelve is talking about expenditures, so outflows of resources from the township. You can see there, the most significant is general government. General government consists of the treasurer, the clerk, supervisor, any elections, the accounting department, all that goes into the general government there. And then the second, we call it other, but that's insurance, um, contributions for, or OPEB, um, other payroll taxes and stuff that don't go to different departments. That goes there. So that other actually decreased six percent from the year before. On the flip side, general government increased four percent. So those are the large, largest ones there. Page thirteen, proprietary funds, ours, page nineteen through twenty-one of the boundary report. Same as your government-wide financial statements. There's more detail broken down by fund. Sewer and water is two separate funds. So page fourteen of the presentation, again, snapshot as of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. The sewer system fund has an unrestricted net position of negative two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand. And the water system fund has a negative eight-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, a little over. So the total net position's actually, for the sewer, is positive, at a little over two-point-seven million. But a lot of that is invested in the capital assets. Uh, just under three million is invested in capital assets. So that's what creates, um, maybe the system itself, all the li, lines, sewer lines, stuff like that. So that's what creates the unrestricted deficit there. Water system fund actually has a, um, investment capital assets of about five-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars, but total's only negative three-oh-eight, is negative in total, which creates the large eight-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. Um, the next, page fifteen, it's just a representation by graph. Um, the blue is your capital assets that I was talking about, the system itself, the lines for the flow. The red is the unrestricted net position there to show where that deficit is. Below the zero line. I heard earlier, you know, talking about rates being raised and different things. Um, basically, that's what it shows. You'd have, rate study was done by the township, raising rates. I know all that's happening, but as of March thirty-first, it wasn't showing that had occurred yet. Same with the water system here on page sixteen. You can see in twenty-two that, um, red is below the line of zero, where the blue represents the investment capital assets above. It's been negative the past two years, so, just mention. One of the ways we look at what should be, uh, in those proprietary funds, the water, the sewer fund, stuff like that, we take your operating expenses, less depreciation, because depreciation's not a cash outflow. And then depending on the needs, your debt service, so your principal and interest, if you have any debt associated with it, capital needs, which are completely subjective, when you need to replace things, what do you need to repair, stuff like that. And we calculate those numbers to figure out what it, what you need to be. So I didn't actually document what that should be here, but that would be the best way to do it, is figure out your operating expenses, less your depreciation, to figure out what you need annually. Back out the debt service, back out any capital needs, and then you can figure out what you should be operating at, at a single year. Um, because of one of the debts, uh, for the sewer fund, um, we also have to do what's called a yellow book or independent auditors report over internal controls, in accordance with government auditing standards. Part of this is compliance with Public Act two-seventy-five of nineteen-eighty, stating that, uh, fund equity, your fund balance or net position should not be in a deficit. There's a special assessment district, which has a deficit there. Uh, that was a planned deficit. Basically, the money's, uh, expended, and then the special assessment comes in to replace that money. So over time, it nests a zero, but it's a planned deficit. And then the sewer and the waters, I already mentioned, have unrestricted net position, deficit net positions. Finally, if you, we're looking at the boundary report, page forty-seven, talks about the upcoming accounting standards over the next couple of years. Uh, the two big ones, um, coming up March of twenty-twenty-three is GESB eighty-seven leases. Either, if you're receiving lease money or you're paying on leases, um, GESB eighty-seven is applicable. And then GESB ninety-six, uh, subscription-based information technology arrangements. So just any kind of technology that you have leases or you're, um, doing over time. Think Microsoft three-sixty-five. It's an easy one most people have heard of, so I usually use that. You're paying X amount per month over time. So you got to look at possibly recording that. That's, I know I went through a lot of stuff high level, um, fairly quickly. Any questions I can try to answer?
Do you have any suggestions?
For what? Specific, any specific ideas in general?
No specific, just asked if you had any suggestions.
Um, I would tell you the water sewer, you know, raise rates. Obviously, you've already done that. You were talking about it earlier, as I mentioned. Um, that would be the biggest one. Try to get those out of a deficit, because it means your expenditures are over your revenues. And, um, at some point, your water sewer lines are going to need to be replaced, and right now, that money's not set aside to replace those.
Any recommendations on OPEB?
OPEB, um, like I said, kind of, not kind of, I did state. The state says they want to see it minimum forty percent funded. Uh, so my recommendation would be, see what you can afford to hit that forty percent number. Uh, that forty percent is a, uh, state, I don't want to say guideline, it's a focus. They are pushing everyone for that. And, um, if you have too many years under that, they're going to start asking questions. Doesn't mean they're going to do anything more than ask questions, but they will start asking questions on that OPEB.
I think our OPEBs are pretty well straightened, straightened around right now. We got a pretty good, we've already been approved by the state. That was done last year, I think, so that, and also our sewer deficit should be.
Yep.
Also.
And so annually, you just got to file that report, you know, every year. You file, it's called Form fifty-five-seventy-two. You file it with the state, tells them what your numbers are and stuff, and then every year, you just re-update your, um, how are you going to get out of that? Because they want to see that minimum forty percent threshold, and you're at nine percent at March thirty-first, twenty-two. So it's just a continuous working at it and telling them how you're going to work at it.
But you don't, you don't have, you don't say that we haven't done that yet.
No, I'm not saying you haven't worked at it, because you definitely have. Um, twenty-one, a hundred-and-thirty, a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars were put away in, for, in your trust, and that's the catch. You have to put the money in the trust, or it doesn't count.
I mean, the letter that you wanted, you know, the letter we need to write to the state over the follow-up. We, we've been keep, I think Rhonda's been doing a great job with that, yeah.
Well, all three issues are, have been addressed. It's just, it's not going to get fixed in one year.
I know. It's just kind of concerning to me, seeing it still just.
Yeah, the direction, the direction is in the right, we're in the right direction on all three.
The, uh, OPEB, just remember, the OPEB is a liability that's created over time. So whenever the board originally, and I don't know exactly off the top of my head, but whenever they originally approved that, could have been thirty-five years ago, could have been sixty-five years ago. I'm not sure. But that liability is created over time, and so it's not something that, you know, and the township was not putting money aside. So now you're starting to put money aside in a trust to pay that down the line. But because of all those years that it didn't occur, and it wasn't required by the state, so, I mean, it is, state's pushing for that now, but it wasn't required at the time like it was if you had a pension, same way.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the auditor's report as presented for fiscal year March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Support?
For by Lisa. Is there any other discussion? Matt, can we get a roll call, please, Lisa?
Craft?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
To Georgia?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, okay? Thank you.
As long as we're here with that, can we make a motion to approve the Manor Custerzen? Contract is presented.
Support by Frank. This is item seven C on the agenda. There's no other discussion. Can we get a roll call, please?
Well, there should be some discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
My question is, um, this comes outside our purview of having to do competitive bids. So my question is, when was the last time this was competitively bid? Do we know? Yeah, because if you haven't done it in a while, my suggestion is that we do, because it hits that threshold. Our policy, our policy requires it.
Yeah.
But if we had competitively bid it within the last couple of years, and they're providing good service, I, I would agree to waive it, but I don't know when it lasts competitively bid, so. See when it lasts competitively bid? I mean, if it's been ten years, that, that's a long time to go with a single-source provider without doing a check.
When is the, um, contract renewed, Dubai?
You know, Jordan, how long our contract's been?
I believe twenty-twenty-two is the final year of the contract, so I'm not positive of that.
So we got until the end of the year?
Well, twenty-twenty-two, so, the one I just presented, I believe, was the final audit. I don't know how long, when the last time we did a bid. I don't know.
When do we have to renew it by? Do we have a certain date?
I, that's kind of up to the township and what the township's deciding. I mean, um.
When do you normally start audit activities?
Uh, it's June, beginning of June, but I can tell you, we start scheduling audits six months before that.
Right.
So we have, we have two or three months to make a decision?
Yep.
Well, we just, um, like you said, table, and then we'll take a look at.
Second that motion, because we'll have to.
We have a second, do I think, right? You just want to rescind your motion, just want to table that item, uh, item seven C.
Thanks, Jordan.
Thanks, Jordan.
Are you in agreement to table item seven C? Do we need to vote on it?
Yes, you do need to vote.
Does any, if I make a motion, we go ahead and table item seven C, the Manor Custerzian, uh, contract? Get somebody to second it.
Support.
Support by Frank. Any other discussion? Support by Frank, any other discussion?
I would suggest amending the motion so we have some specific actions that we have to take in order to just, not just table it. But table it and maybe look and see when was the last competitive bid. And if it was recent, then perhaps we may vote to waive our policy. Or if it hasn't been recent, then maybe we want to competitively bid it. But I think that your motion needs to include those action items.
So what timeframe you want to look at?
I think we just needed to know when it was the last one, and then, then it's up to the board to decide. Is that recent enough that we feel comfortable that this, that the pricing is still competitive, yeah.
My point being is that we'll have to bring that to the next meeting then, because it's not something we're gonna be able to discuss.
Right, exactly, exactly. But I think in your motion, you need to state those action items so that we don't lose them.
So we'll, we'll just, okay, I'll be, word the motion to state that we'll take a look at when our item, our contract was last.
Competitively bid.
Competitively bid from our auditors. You know, township auditing company. But we can put a date on it right now, if it's like, if it hasn't been competitively bid for five years or older, then we would look at it again. But if it's been more recent, like two years or something, that we can, and we don't have to bring it back to the board, then we might probably bring competitive bids at our next meeting at that point and be, be done with it, because it.
I would, I would say if it, if it wasn't competitively, if it was competitively bid with the last reward, then I'd be okay. So I don't know, how long was the last contract, was it three years?
I believe so.
Is Jordan, Jordan not here? So I would say if it was competitively bid at the last award, then I'm okay. But if it wasn't, then I, I think it would be our responsibility to competitively bid it. I mean, if you want to make that motion, if it was competitively bid at the last award.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to go ahead and, um, take a look at the current contract we got with our, our current auditor. If it was competitively bid within the past three years, basically what you're saying. Then we will go ahead and bring it back to the, to board next meeting. If not, we will look at alternative bids for the auditing for the township business. Does that sound good?
I'll second that motion, or Lisa, did you want us to do less? Did you motion? Okay, I'll second it.
Not hurting my feelings.
Can we get a roll call, Lisa, please?
Yes. Still writing the motion.
Yes, Mike, have you got any, any questions on that one?
Philbrook?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna move back to item seven A under the fire department, new hires and a new business chief.
Good evening, board. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to introduce the board and the community that's here to our twoest, our two newest hires for paid-on call. So if I could have Maya and Tiffany come forward here, please. So before I say too much, yeah, come on over here, Maya and Tiffany, that's fine. Stand and face the board and face the audience. Before I say too much, I'm gonna perform like a little different format for this introduction. So I asked Maya and Tiffany both to write just small bios about themselves. And they both wrote really great bios, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have them read their bio that they wrote. Introduce themselves and, and what their plans are for the future. Then I'll talk afterward about next steps. Okay, so you got your bio?
Yep. Hi, everyone, I'm Maya. I am a recent graduate from Romeo High School and a freshman at Oakland University. I'm majoring in biomedical sciences with the goal of being a future emergency room physician. I'm so thankful that I get the opportunity to work with an amazing fire department. And help out the community as well as learn new skills through hands-on experience in the field of emergency medicine. Thank you.
Good.
Okay, hi, my name's Tiffany Maris. I'm also a recent Romeo High School graduate, and I also attend Oakland University. My major is pre-medicine with the goal in becoming a cardiologist. And I'm also excited to work for the fire department because I am very excited to get the hands-on experience to get, for being a doctor. And also helping my community.
So now I'll expand on that a little bit. Two Romeo High School graduates, they, they really worked hard, they took the national registry right after, or right after high, graduating high school. They passed, which is a huge accomplishment. Both you could see live in the community, believe in the community, believe in the healthcare system, want to keep pursuing it. They spent a lot of time at the firehouse with us, they did a lot of their clinical time ride-alongs with, with all the crew that's here. I think they're gonna be a great asset to our department. And I'd like the board's approval to continue to keep Maya and Tiffany on as paid-on call.
What was Maya's last, what was your last name, Maya, I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry, I'm Maya Nikolovski.
What is it, Nikolovski?
Nikolovski, okay. It's a longer one.
So chief, you're gonna start grooming future doctors for your department?
Yeah, right. We already got one, so.
Already had one, yeah.
That's great.
So the board's approval?
Absolutely, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of the two new paid-on calls.
Oh, one other thing. They went about the proper process of getting hired, right? So they turned in their applications after high school. They did like a one-on-one interview with shift commanders or shift officers for the day. Who approved the next meeting, which is them coming into the officers' meeting. Where they introduce themselves to the officers, and then the officers ask them questions. So we did that with each of them last month. And the one question that was asked of them both was if they're gonna go on and do Fire Academy. And they both said yes. So with those busy schedules, they're also gonna start the Fire Academy in January, so.
Congratulations.
You're gonna have to backfill them in four years.
Maybe a whole career change, maybe possibly.
Maybe.
Never know. Thanks, chief, yeah, we.
Yeah, thank you, welcome.
So I support it. Mike made a motion, I went ahead and supported all in favor at the board?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the other firefighters for coming out tonight to support the new hires too, that was awful nice.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it, thanks. You guys can leave if you want, if you don't, you can stay and listen to the rest of the meeting. Don't, don't run.
When are those subs coming in?
All right, moving on. Item seven D, the sewer and water committee. So a couple meetings ago, I think we decided to go ahead and form a sewer and water committee to try to get a grasp on where we're going and what's happened with our sewer and water deficit. Teresa actually volunteered to step up and kind of cheer the committee. I think that you went back and you gathered some people that go ahead and become, you want to go ahead and speak then, or just know what you got going?
Kind of turn, all right, I'll make it quick. Okay, so first of all, like you just said, oh, can you hear me? So I did volunteer to help with the debt reduction plan for the state of Michigan. And put together a subcommittee consisting of the following people. Myself, Paul Okunowski, as everyone knows, put together the sewer reduction plan. Gino Pasquale, who is a resident of Cloverfield, and Janet Batani, who is also a resident of Cloverfield. And I'm here tonight to ask for the approval of the four of us to be on that committee. And I did want to say there was a fifth person, his name is Louis Perez. He's also from Cloverfield, and he expressed some extreme interest in being on the committee. And he was also going to reach out to Blue Water Trucking for us. However, he never did respond to my text message or my emails since he said he wanted to do this. So I'm not sure if he's on it or not on it. And if it's okay, if he decides it yes, maybe something had happened, could we add him later? That's my question. And then if the committee is approved, and in the interest of saving time, we all got together already ahead of time. And so we did an impromptu meeting and had three items that we were looking for, for an October meeting, which will be probably in the next two weeks, we're gonna try to get together. And I emailed that to our clerk, Susan. And it was the following three items that we were looking for, which we had discussed, and she talked to me at the beginning of the meeting, that she is putting all this together for us. So first of all, we're looking for a copy of the debt reduction plan that was submitted to the state for the last three years. We're looking for water usage of all of users, but separated by commercial and residential users, and what they're being charged. And the third thing we're looking for is a copy of the water and sewer ordinance. And back in, it would have been May, because these are June fifteenth minutes that I'm looking at. So Mike Tremblay was looking for four specific things in a motion. And it was a ten-to-fifteen-year projection of the assumed costs for water and sewer. We are, that is obviously working on that. Investigate, writing off some of the water receivables, that's nothing that we had discussed yet because we weren't really sure about the committee yet. And to understand the prior rate study where that went wrong, we are going to work on that based on the information that we asked for. And to put in place a metering system to identify over-usage and enforce the ordinance, and this is where we're looking for the ordinance for. That said, Paul gave us all a copy of what is called the sewer proposal final of April fifteen, two thousand sixteen. And seeing his, how this has allowed the sewer fund to go from red to black, we're going to try to use that same concept. Let's see, where am I at, same concept on the water fund. And with the sewer fund in the black, and that's according to the report that was sent to all of us in June that are on water and sewer. There was some discussion at our little impromptu meeting regarding those sewer rates, the fact that they increased by forty-six percent. And it was specifically under the waste disposal category. So if we can get some actual numbers as to where that forty-six percent increase comes from, that would be great. And we also would like if our supervisor Philbrook would be our liaison for any additional questions or information that we're looking for, if that's okay with board. And that's all we have right now because we really haven't had a formal meeting, that was kind of an impromptu.
I have no objections, sure, I would love to.
I think that's great.
Okay, so we're good. We'll have another report on the next meeting, because we plan a meeting before that, and I'll give you an update on some ideas and suggestions that we have.
Do you want to introduce your other committee members if they're here?
Are they present?
Janet?
Janet is here.
Gino too.
I don't, is Gino here? No, so Janet?
Hi Janet.
Hi Janet. Thank you.
Okay, so we're working at it for you.
I think you got a good committee.
Okay.
My question is, do you have any of the three items that you asked for yet?
Uh, no, I just sent the email over, and Susan has been wonderful about it, and she's working on it.
Is the water and sewer ordinance rewritten for the new rates? It is? Okay, perfect.
And we're still trying to reach out to Blue Water Trucking because I think that's our biggest commercial user and possibly a problem. And I don't want to say that, but, so we're still reaching out to Blue Water Trucking and see if we can get some information from them.
Is it possible to add someone from Blue Water Trucking on your committee?
Well, that's what we were trying, that gentleman that was here speaking. That's who, I, but I haven't been able to reach him. So someone can help me with that.
Is there our biggest user by far?
Pardon?
They're our biggest user by far.
Yes, yes. So if maybe someone could help me with getting in touch with him, that would be wonderful.
That'd be my pleasure, Teresa, I'll make sure I get, get in touch with them.
Because we would like him to sit in with us, so we can get some information on that. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you, Teresa.
Okay, do we make a motion to approve that committee?
Probably should.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the committee to be formed of Teresa Rito-Smith, Paul Okunowski, Gino Pasquale, and Janet Batani.
And possibly Louis Perez.
And possibly a Louis Perez.
And possibly Blue Water Trucking.
Correct, thank you.
Correct?
Yeah. With Mike as liaison.
Sounds good.
With Mike as the board lay of the.
Yes, please.
I'll second that motion.
Support by, Mike, is there any other discussion? May we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Philbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Ms. Craft?
Yes.
Ms. Crafty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Teresa, for everything. Janet, thanks for, you know, stepping up to the plate on that, too.
It's refreshing to see the community standing up and helping us identify and resolve these types of situations, so really do appreciate your support.
Okay, moving on, item seven E, block hours for the IT, high-tech company, high-tech. Susan?
Yeah, so we always buy block hours, it saves us a lot of money. We used up what we had, in fact, I think we're in the red from the storm damage. So I'm in the process of, I filed an insurance claim to get some of that money back. Hopefully, it's gonna be covered, sometimes there are loopholes that I might not have seen, but I'm waiting on that. So we, I, I, we have two options here, fifty hours and a hundred hours. We split this with the fire department, so whichever one we choose, we will be paying half of it.
Did you see this, chief?
She has this. This total down here is wrong because they're totaling.
Seventeen, seven fifty instead of eleven-five, but it's combined total.
Yeah, they're combining them, yeah. And I know we've already used up quite a few, I mean, we've used quite a few hours, I want to say like, at least fifty already. With this, with the damage that we had. So I know it looks like a lot of money, but I think we should go with the eleven.
When we, we buy block, is that how we get our IT services, is just through hourly support? So they don't do preventive maintenance then, do they, unless we ask them?
Yeah, yeah, I want to say it's a hundred and seventy-five an hour.
That's what it says, yeah, if we, if you don't buy, it's a hundred and seventy. So buying block hours is probably the responsible thing to do, for sure.
Which is what we usually do, but we've used them up, and then some with the storm damage.
So how many hours do we use typically in a year, do we know?
Well, we.
I know we had an unusual circumstances past month.
Just in that, we used sixty, I think. Before, we bought fifty, I think.
So fifty per year?
We can use them up, yeah. Especially because we're sharing.
Now, if you buy a hundred and don't use it, you still pay for a hundred, or you just, is it just a, like a retainer fee and you just use it over time and then you have to re-up when you use it up?
Which is where we are, yes.
And that can go into next year as well, correct?
So there's no time limit?
Exactly.
Oh, I think that's, I think I would buy a hundred. For sure.
Yeah, we don't kind of revisit it.
So I, I know we're, we're a small operation, if this is what we spend on IT. So I just, I don't even know how many companies we actually offer this. So I would be willing to waive our competitive bidding policy, since this is not that much over our threshold, and I think our threshold is low to buy a hundred hours. Because I'm not sure how many people would react to, this, this is not a lot of money for an IT company. So you might have trouble even getting bids. So if, if you want to make a motion. I would make a motion to purchase a hundred block hours at eleven thousand five hundred dollars and, and share the support with the fire department.
I'll support.
Support by Lisa? Does anybody else have any other discussion? Can we get a roll call, please, Lisa?
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Ms. Crafty?
Yes.
Ms. Craft?
Yes.
Mr. DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Mr. Philbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, on the subject, chief, I did talk with Owen, and they're gonna come on, re, just redo that transfer switch. So the price, the original call we had from them back before was like twenty-nine hundred dollars, one up to thirty-one hundred dollars, they don't have a scheduled date. Again, it's maybe one of those issues, but hopefully they'll get it done, you know, so. So I'll let you know when we get a date. Okay, moving on. Okay, moving on. My agenda. Moving on, item 7G, the cemetery, oh no, I'm sorry, 7F, BSNA Cemetery Software Proposal. Frank, is that you?
Yep, that's me. So, um, over the years, um, the tracking and selling of cemetery plots has all been done manually, and, you know, it's nobody's fault, no one ever embraced the technology that is available nowadays. So, when you, when you look at what we do, we don't even know how many plots, how many plots we sell a year. You have to look at all the sales that we had, and look for $800 or, uh, $500, what it costs for a plot. And besides that, there's like three different maps for one cemetery, and it's very, it's very disorganized. And again, it's nobody's fault, it's just how things happen over time. But BSNA has a software program where you can, um, we have to input all the data that we have, and that's how we'd be able to sell, you know, as people come in to purchase plots, they would, you know, all the information regarding that plot would be entered into the software. The software program also tells you exactly where somebody, you know, based on how you put it in, will tell you where everybody's buried, how many plots we have left, and it just, it's a better way to keep everything organized, instead of paper maps. We literally have a paper map that's, you know, like, two by three feet with all the lots, and just handwritten notes in there, and it's just not, it's just not organized properly. So, the software, we inquired about it, uh, the cemeterymanagement.net, financial management part of it is, the software costs 27, $2,770. And, uh, the setup, the software setup would be 1,000, and the financial management application would be 1,000. $1,000, and then, uh, the travel expense of 255. So, the total cost with this would be 5200 and 7, $5,270, and then it'd be an annual service fee of 555.
Is the cemetery management net different than BSNA?
No, it's just a program that they use.
It's probably a module, right?
Yeah, it's a module.
During the setup, are they the ones that are gonna program everything in?
Yeah.
They're gonna put down who's buried and where they're buried?
Oh, no. No, that's coming in, and, yeah, that's something we have to do. Uh, and one of the things we're possibly looking at is if our staff don't have time, we'd hire some interns, you know, from college or whatever, and they could input that information.
Do you know how much we might save by doing this?
Uh, I don't know if it's a matter of how much you'd save, I think it's more of it keeping organized and not going through the embarrassment of digging a hole and finding a grave already there.
Okay.
You know?
So, it's a quality issue more than it is a...
Yeah, quality, and, yeah, being organized, and being able to financially track what you're doing with all the plots, and, 'cause again, like I say, right now, over the years, everybody's done it differently, and we have, we literally have three maps for Bruce Armada.
Three different maps?
Three different maps, yeah. So, if you can't find a name on one map, you gotta go to the other map, and it's just very...
So, you will save time, 'cause you won't have to research three different maps?
Correct, yeah.
How many people would be involved in the training of the new software, Frank?
Uh, probably, I don't know, two or three, I guess, myself, I'd like to be trained on it, seeing, overseeing it. And then Christine, Christina, who's our, you know, building department, she does the cemetery stuff, and she's already very familiar with BSNA, 'cause she did it over in Armada for quite a while. She's, um, picked up the beat and hasn't missed a beat since she's got here.
Lisa Cross?
Yeah, maybe Lisa Cross, well, yeah, maybe Lisa Cross, we'll see.
No, uh, does this qualify for ARPA?
I would say it does, it's part of infrastructure, no.
Okay.
I, I realize the situation, and it's a mess.
So, you concur?
I do. I mean, we got open areas out in the cemetery, and we're afraid to even sell one of the plots here because we don't know if somebody's buried it or not.
Right.
You know, that's a whole separate issue, so, there's some lack of, and again, and we don't program things and put names in, and in the BSNA software, we're gonna end up with a bunch of unknowns, too.
Once you get it right, and you got one spot to go.
Right.
It's a whole lot easier to administer.
So, it's all, yeah.
So, I make a motion that the board approve, uh, the new BSNA software for cemeteries, software?
I would suggest quoting the amount of 6,080, which would include the, the software, the training, the travel, and the first-year maintenance.
Say that again, I'm sorry. Oh, you're saying, uh, with the, the, the annual service fee?
Yeah, do you have to pay that now, or is that just something that would occur after year one?
I think it all, it just occurs af, well, let's see, after two years.
Then I would quote the...
Service fees are billed annually after two years. Unlimited support during the first year with the program is included in your purchase price. Thereafter, service fees are billed annually after two years, at 555.
So, I would, I would suggest maybe amending the motion to include the dollar amount of 5,525, which would include the travel.
Okay.
And then also include the, uh, the, uh, the, the service fee, but that's not due until next year.
Uh, well, two years, right.
And, and then, if you don't mind, if you would include that, we would use ARPA funds for this.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's annually, the service fees are annually, so next year, or a year from whenever it's implemented, and then after two years, they give a, they reserve the right to increase the service fee.
Yeah, that's, that's normal.
So, which is, yeah, that's...
Yeah, they're limiting their increase of the CPA.
Right. So, it'll be 555 next year.
Okay, so I make a motion that the board approve of the total per, proposed, uh, price of 5,000, $5,600, along with the annual, um, service fee of 555, which will start in another year.
To be paid with ARPA?
To be paid with ARPA, I'm sorry.
I'll second that motion.
Support by Mike, is there any other discussion? Can we get a little roll call, please?
Mr. DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Ms. Crafty?
Yes.
Ms. Craft?
Yes.
Mr. Philbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Frank.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, moving on, item 7, uh, 7G's cemetery plot pricing. All right, Frank.
Yeah, so the next, I make, make the proposal that, well, I believe we should do a price increase, because we annually, annually, we pay, um, like, $22,000, close to $25,000 in maintenance fee, which means cutting the grass in all three cemeteries. And, um, prices continue going up. The Sexton, um, he charges an annual fee of $7,000, I think it is. All the way around, we just gotta make some, some income in order to cover the expenses of maintaining a cemetery, because, put all the, the maintenance aside, as far as cutting grass and the landscaping and stuff, we have graves out there that are tipping over, they need to be straightened out. And, you know, those, the cost of that, I believe, is three to $800 per monument.
Expensive.
Yeah, it's expensive. And we got quite a few out there. I haven't counted how many are out there, but I'm, I'm gonna bet there's probably about 50 of them. They're either falling over or are leaning. Especially the old ones that were put up in like the 1800s, you know, they're, they're tall, I don't know how much they weigh, they probably weigh a couple tons, but they're, they're starting to lean. There's been some volunteers that have gone out there, and let, two or three times, and they've, you know, cut some, um, um, brushed along the fence line, cut trees that were growing next to graves, so it's starting, they're starting to look pretty good.
Yeah, you guys have done a good job.
Yeah, it's nice work.
Yeah, well, you had a lot of help out there, yeah, they did a good job. So, I'm making a proposal that, uh, you know, we go from, we double the price, and, from 500 to 1,000 on residents, and 1,000 to 2,000 on, um, non-resident.
I'll second.
We just raised in prices, you know, we went from 400 to 500, and we had no non-residential, they were, they were also paying $400, um, a plot. And we raised that to $1,000 last year. To sell a gravesite, to, just a gravesite, not including opening and closing, for $2,000, I think that's, I call Res, Rescued Cemetery, they don't even charge that much for a monument site. I mean, we have a, a nice cemetery, but it's not something that we would, we should be charging a resident $2,000. I just buried my father, cost me $24,000. It's expensive nowadays.
Yeah, I know.
And again, I'm, it's a sore spot, but our cemeteries are in the predicament that they're in because we allowed them to get that way.
Right.
And I think it was a lack of maintenance, and maybe was taken care of them before that allowed them to, to become the mess that they're in. And now, we gotta raise our prices at 2,000, Washington Township's $300 of, uh, for a spot, $300. We're gonna, we just can't see it happening to our residents in our community, that born and raised here, to charge them $1,000. If I wanted to buy 10, I bought 10 in Washington, it's my hometown, if I bought 10 here, it'd be $20,000 for me to bury my family. I just couldn't afford it, you know? So, that's my, my thoughts.
I, I got a couple of questions. How do we fund the cemetery? You said that cemetery maintenance is 25,000, and that doesn't include the 7,000 and Sexton fees, right?
Right.
So, really, it's 32,000, estimated. How do we fund that today? Do we fund it through these fees?
So, when, when monies come in for the purchase of plots and, uh, opening and closing, actually, the opening and closing, we don't get nothing out of that except 25 bucks, if that's something we need to address next contract, but, um, so, yeah, when they sell the plots, that money goes into a, you know, bucket, and that's where that money comes from.
So, if there's a shortfall, then the township subsidizes the...
Then it comes out of the funnel, right.
So, based on, on average, how many plots we sell, does the new rate cover the 32,000? Do we know? Do we, do we have an estimate?
Well, then, I don't know how many plots we sell.
I know, but do we know on average, like, how many plots?
No, again, that's, we don't, we don't know how many we sell.
So, what you're trying, what you're doing here is raising the rate so that the township doesn't have to subsidize a great, subsidizes less of the cemetery maintenance.
Right. Yeah. You know, now, if that, if what I'm proposing is too high, then if somebody has a suggestion of, you know, lower, but I do believe they need to be increased a little bit.
Do, do we know how these compare to any other cemeteries? I mean, Mike says it's, it's high.
Yeah, well, locally, it's probably about the same, right? All the other municipal cemeteries?
Other municipalities around this amount?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, what we're currently charging there, we're higher than what the local cemeteries are, what we're currently charging, if we go to 2,000 for a non-resident, or 1,000 for a resident, it's gonna be a lot higher than what our local cemeteries are charging, like anybody in Armada, um, Leonard, I mean, Lenox Township, uh...
Some cemeteries, you can't get a plot if you're a non-resident.
Right.
We ain't gonna sell for many...
So, this is a luxury.
Two thousand dollars.
Well, it depends on how bad, if someone grew up here and moved, and they really wanted it, they would pay it.
$300 in Washington for a plot.
Yeah, I hear you, but I think they're in a little bit different financial shape than we are. You know, that's, that's really, you know...
I mean, the only backfire is no one will buy any of the plots, and they will subsidize more. That's the issue. But I don't, who knows what that is?
Maybe it's...
I think I'm okay with trying it for a year and see, or a year or two.
But, leave it the way it is?
No, no, do this.
Oh.
I mean, if we find out nobody's buying them, then we know we're, our prices are probably too high.
Well, what if we raised it to 700?
I'm not suggesting it change, I'm just suggesting that...
Yeah, I know.
We look at it.
I know.
'Cause I know you've put some thought into this, Frank, so...
Yeah, we've been, yeah, I mean, we've been working with Christine pretty closely, and...
I know when we raised them last year, we had it pretty well dialed in with the increases, but our, not to say it in the wrong way, but our maintenance fees and our Sexton fees have gone up dramatically over, I think, I don't want to say it, but maybe over 100% of what we were paying before, probably even more from one year to the next. So, maybe it's not the, what we're charging again, but maybe it's the maintenance.
But, but what we were, what we were getting before, I understood, was not that good. Are we getting better services now?
Yeah.
So...
We are, but then again, too, you gotta really, I mean, things have gone up, you know, since a year ago. Gas prices, you know, labor. So, it's not that easy for them to maintain a crew, you know, to do the landscaping work. I know a lot of guys, a lot of landscaping guys are complaining already that their help drove them back to school, so they're short staff now.
Can I, I want to ask a question?
If you wanted Janet, go, we'd want to have...
I just want, how many cemeteries does Bruce Township have? I mean, the Village has one at 32, and, and...
We have three cemeteries, and one that's privately maintained by, uh, by Mr. Farr, that's actually here, so...
Oh, okay.
Bruce Cemetery Association, isn't that what you call it, Steve?
Yeah.
So, where are the three cemeteries again?
One's on Armada Center Road.
Okay.
East of, uh, or, yeah, east of Ca, uh, Caney.
Okay.
One on Van Dyke, across the street from Toit.
Yeah.
And then we have one on, um, on, uh, North Kitter Road. That's east of M53.
Okay.
That's the oldest, that's a very old cemetery.
Okay.
Then we have one at the corner of 34, or Taft Road and Fisher.
Yeah, Taft Road and Fisher's on that's privately maintained.
So, we have a motion by Frank, it's seconded by Susan, to go ahead and raise the rates from 1,000 for a resident and 2,000 for a non-resident, and that's just a plot only. That doesn't include opening and closing, doesn't include foundations, and just to get the actual piece of land, you know, so...
Frank, would you mind amending your motion to include a, a look a year out, just to look back and see?
Yeah.
It'd be, I would support your motion if you just amended it to include that.
Okay, so, make a motion to, for the board to approve proposed new rates of 1,000 resident, 2,000 non-resident for one year, and then reevaluate after that year.
Second.
Thank you, Frank.
Susan? There's no other discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Ms. Craft?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Crafty?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Philbrook? Motion carries.
All right, moving on, item seven, item did pass. Seven H holds and credits on the cemeteries?
Yeah, I think there was a typo on that other one, so, yeah, this next one also has to do with cemeteries.
Oh, this is a new one? My assets is correct.
Yeah. I had brought this up, I don't know, a while back, a few months back. So we have a list of individuals that is attached to your board packet that in, in the past, they've been allowed to either put a cemetery plot on hold or they've put X amount of dollars down and it still hasn't been paid for. So there is a, in the state, in the Michigan State Constitution, there is verbiage in there that talks about how Article seven, Section twenty-six of the State of Michigan Constitution, where it says, "Full payment is required at time of purchase. The township is not allowed to place assets on hold or on payments over time for the Bruce Township Cemeteries." And that, not only cemeteries, but that's with all township assets. So again, we have this list of individuals, I've contacted our attorneys, and they suggest that we send out the first letter and if we don't get a response within thirty or sixty days, whatever days, however many days we choose, then it would, then they would send the second letter out. And then we'd take those plots back and, you know, be able to sell them to whoever wants one.
So you're giving these people sixty days to pay it in full?
Yeah, yeah.
So they own the plot?
They don't own it yet.
Well, they would if they paid it in sixty days.
They would if they came in and paid in full or paid their balance.
And if they don't pay, what's the recourse?
Then the cemeteries come back.
Do we refund the deposit?
I don't think so.
We just keep the deposit and then these become available at the new price?
Right.
The letter, I mean, there's a lot of yours from two thousand eighteen, it's basically stating the same thing.
Yeah.
And it said that they had until December seventeen, two thousand eighteen, or they will be releasing lots for sale. It was never followed up on by the previous administration.
No, no.
So we would use a letter similar to this?
Yes, that's why I retyped one that is very similar to that, except I put in what I found out through the State of Michigan Constitution.
How many are there?
Um, about twelve and seventeen, what's that, nine, twenty-nine, thirty lots, plots, forty?
Got forty on that second page?
Twelve on account with deposits and seventeen names on hold with no deposits.
Correct.
So would they be, whether they have deposits or no deposits and just holds, would they still be charged for the previous rate or the new rate?
I would say it'd be a new rate. I mean, some of these plots have been on hold, you can see the dates. Nineteen, two thousand seven, two thousand five, nineteen ninety-four.
Yeah, if they're on hold, we approve the new rates today, the new rates apply to any on hold.
Right. Nineteen ninety-three. There's one here, nineteen ninety-two, I mean...
You may not be able to get a hold of some of these people, too.
Right, and that's, that, you know, you're right, and then, and I think...
Well, they might have been moved, yeah.
You know, because it's such a sensitive issue, I don't know, it's just, I guess that's why they're afraid to pull the trigger. The last time, they sent the letter out in twenty eighteen. I mean, it is a sensitive issue, but if we can, you know, find everybody's, you know, we do have the addresses to these people, it's just a matter of sending them the letter.
But what you, what we're doing is just becoming in compliance with Michigan law.
Correct.
And that's be part of the letter, right?
Yes.
So they understand what we're doing, why we're doing it.
Yeah, the letter I just passed down, and that's, that's pretty much how it would be sent out. So I make a mo...
There's a lot more than thirty or forty. On this list alone, there's, some of them are holding eight lots. One guy's got eight lots on hold, looks like our balance...
We want to cross records and see if they were registered to vote in our township.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Doesn't have to be done.
Not a bad idea.
Okay.
That's a just putting in there that no response is a decline, so you don't have to follow it up with the lawyers? If they want to keep them, no response?
Yeah. I don't know, I'll have to, yeah, that's, that's a great suggestion, but I have to, I don't know, we'll have to look into that.
You already have the base for not doing it.
Right.
That's what we do with our FOIA's.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess we can add it in there.
I can give you the language.
All right.
Yeah. If no response is received within sixty days, it reverts back to the township.
Okay. All right, so I make a motion that the board approve for this letter to go out to all the people that have either a deposit or a hold on a cemetery plot, and add the language of a no response would be giving up your right to the lot, plot, within sixty days.
I'll second Frank. Is there any other discussion? Can we get a roll call, please, Lisa?
Mr. Giorgio?
Yes.
Mr. Philbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Ms. Crafty?
Yes.
Ms. Craft?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Moving on, item seven, seven, aye, three entry door bids. Frank, you were on it, too.
Yeah, so we ended up getting three bids for the rear door, employee door over there to the township in the back here. One, the back entrance to the fire station, and then another one in the front of the fire station. So we ended up getting three bids, one from Casino Builders, their total was eleven thousand four hundred forty-four. Curb Appeal was eleven thousand one hundred seventy-eight. And then Peters Glass and Screen, they came in at eight thousand four hundred forty-four. So, it's gonna take about five weeks before the material comes in for them to replace these doors, according to Peters. There's, I've been in discussion with them, and it was pretty much the same with the other ones there. There was a weight on material before it got there, but in this case, I mean, it's, you know, like four thousand dollars cheaper, three thousand dollars cheaper to go with Peters Glass.
They're local.
Yeah, they're a Bruce Township.
They're a Bruce Township.
So Mario from Casino, though?
Yeah, yeah, his residence. Yeah, so I make a motion to approve these doors that they're needed very badly, because, well, before I make the motion, yeah, they're needed. The firehouse doors are rusty.
Yeah.
The employee entrance door at the township hall here is so flimsy, you can just blow on it and it'll open.
Right.
Are these doors similar to the ones we have here?
Yes, yeah.
These were put in by Casino when we first, back in two thousand twenty, so he did a great job with them.
Yeah, he did.
But unfortunately...
Do they have windows like that, will they? Would they solid?
No, they're gonna have windows like that, because you want to see, you want to make sure no one's coming in when you're pushing the door open, so you don't hit them. Huh? Depends who it is.
Even an employee door back here?
Yeah, unless you guys don't want it.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, last night, when the alarm went off, it was nice to be able to see inside of the door to make sure that...
No one will stand there.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
I'd be honest with you.
So, I make a motion for the board to approve the three commercial aluminum doors with one-inch insulation tempered safety glass for the amount of eight thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents, installed by Peters Glass and Screen.
Using ARPA, using ARPA funds?
Yes, using ARPA funds for that as well.
Thank you.
I will second that.
Any other discussion? He's gonna, will he be working with the security company to make sure that the door latches and everything's gonna...
Well, he, they're prepping it, he put it in, the doors are prepped for later use of electronic latch release.
Right, which we've approved that, all we have in here.
They're actually starting next week, the security, but they'll coordinate it.
Right, they'll come back and do whatever they have to do.
Okay. All right. Can we get a roll call, please, Lisa?
Yes, Giorgio?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Frank. Moving on to item seven, J purchase of phones for board members.
So, yeah, this is how Verizon does their estimates now. Went and spent some time with them, we talked about getting phone, phones, because we really shouldn't be using our phones, our personal phones, for business purposes. So they, this is for six phone lines, but they also, I had them give me an estimate on tablets, because a lot of municipalities are going to paperless meetings. So that's included in the bid, too. Gosh, I've been...
The tablets are for the meetings, instead of having this in front of us, we would have a tablet in front of us?
I just had that included. I, I think it's really important that we have phones. I've had a couple FOIA requests where they're asking for personal phone texts and things like that. And that feels intrusive, of course, because, you know, it's your personal use, but it, once you use your phone for anything business, it becomes public record and anything is, it can be FOIA'd, so...
I think we had one more, and that would be our department head for the fire department, too.
That's why it's six.
Oh, is it six? Kind of, if we can get a better breakdown on the totals for everything, you know, what the grant totals are, I guess, what it's gonna cost monthly?
So this would be a total of four hundred and sixty-four dollars plus, well, we won't have tax, a month for everything, but if we, without the tablets, it'd be two hundred and fifty-nine a month.
So that would include the phones?
Yeah.
Everything? Got like an iPhone or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, your tablet's like a phone, it has, it will have a phone number, but it's used as a phone. So what they typically charge is like, you know, like sixty dollars for your phone, and then like twenty dollars for the iPad is what they would do.
These are iPhone twelves, you're listing the devices there, and the iPad's the ninth generation. I'm just throwing this out for, you know, conversation purposes, I don't know how you all feel about it.
So that's forty-five dollars per month per iPad, or per, iPad's the ninth generation with one hundred and fifty dollars off, or three hundred and twenty-nine dollars each, or forty-five dollars a month. So the iPads, we did six of those.
Yeah, I only got five.
It's two hundred and seventy dollars just for the, just for the rent on the iPads themselves. And you're saying that the total bill's four sixty-four, what are the costs of the, we have to buy phones?
It's not a rental charge, it's a...
Well, we got a service fee.
Forty-five dollars a month is a service fee for that iPad.
But that's for, well...
That's for five iPads.
So who, where's the three twenty-nine get paid then? For the unit?
Oh, I see what you're doing. You're saying three twenty-nine each for the iPad, or you can put them on payments for forty-five dollars a month?
Yeah.
I see. My mistake.
So the payments alone on the iPads are two hundred and seventy dollars, what are the payments on the phones? You know, I just bought this phone and this thing is ridiculous and I'm paying it.
And what is the length of the contract, too, I'd be interested in. Me personally, I don't want another phone. I have four email addresses that I need to keep track of along with, I really don't want another phone.
I hear what you're saying, I'm not a fan of carrying two phones either, but if your phone ever gets FOIA'd, you're gonna have to turn it over, I mean...
Your phone cannot be FOIA'd.
Yes, it can.
Your phone cannot be FOIA'd. Your personal phone cannot be FOIA'd.
Yes, it can.
What conversations do we just have with attorneys today? Because we have a FOIA request right now. And as long as you use it for business, it is FOIable.
Your entire phone?
Yeah.
I find that difficult to believe.
Where you can control and wipe a container of it, that you work container, but otherwise it's...
Yeah.
Well, it's not everything on my phone.
So sometimes they'll request certain things from your phone and then you have to get them...
I think that's intrusive if they can FOIA a personal phone.
I have a, it's called decipher software, that if I needed to print copies of text messages or anything like that, I could provide those. And I've done that for my, you know, just my own personal business as well, but I have a hard time believing that they could FOIA your entire usage of your phone.
It's not a business phone, it's a personal phone. It's different if it's a business phone.
But if it's used for business purposes, texts...
We text each other, for example, or...
Why don't we change our business practices?
I don't text anymore.
Yeah, I believe that.
Unless it's a confirmation of a meeting.
Yeah, because I really don't want another phone.
Yeah.
I mean, personally, I wouldn't want one.
It's hard to do, though, with us, because we're in, like myself, sometimes you don't want to miss a call from somebody important. And you give them, I give them my cell phone number, you know, just so, just in case. I might be down the hall or here, whatever, you know, I don't like playing phone tag, especially when it's an important call. So, I don't know, that's just me, though.
Is that price gonna change if we eliminate two phones, let's just say, Susan? Is that a package deal for four sixty-four a month for the...
I didn't ask that, but I don't think it's...
Tablets would be, have to be mandatory, we're gonna go to paperless. And that's if we have it, the contract would be thirty-six month, Lisa.
Thirty-six months, okay.
It basically says thirty-six months for free phones.
So the phones are included in the forty-four, or forty-five dollars per line?
According to this paper, that's right. Now, what you got on here, Susan?
I was just looking at the summary, this is why I went and saw them, and there's a, he wrote out for it.
Has anyone checked with MTA to see what township best practices are?
For what?
I think that's where they draft from, right? MTA, you're...
MTA is, a lot of people are going to paperless and, and when I went to my clerk's meeting, everybody was carrying two phones. Not everybody, but a lot of people. It is cumbersome, it's awkward.
I think it requires more discussion, I think it's an interesting topic.
I think it is, too.
Tablet, whatever you want, just putting it out there.
I think it's a great idea in a way, because I use my, I have to use my phone once in a while or something, too. Like Frank said, I'm on a, I'm on a road a lot with builders and developers and, you know, even residents, you know. And I have another phone that I've used for my election that I use sometimes, so it would be nice to have that cell phone and give the availability to residents, be able to get ahold of you, too. I mean, I want to be able to be accessible, you know, whenever somebody wants to reach me, so...
I think if it does come back to the board, or when it does come back to the board, it should be supported with justification, documented justification, and then documentation on how much does this cost? Because I have trouble figuring out what is the total cost, yeah. And I think there might be a better justification for the three major elected officials, the ones that are, other than the two trustees, but that's, that's subject to opinion, too.
Can we revisit it next month? So do you want to just say we'll revisit it next month with some better clarification on that? I mean, it makes sense to me, it just needs to be broke down a little bit. After I looked at it, it started making more sense, I guess, but just to make sure.
So what do you want, what do you need to know? What more do you need to know? Do you want to make, just go to three phones? Four phones?
Three phones, five?
Four.
There'd be four phones.
I think a documented justification would be helpful, too.
Documented justification? What do you mean?
Why?
Why?
Why do we want them? Why do we need them? In writing, in printed writing. So if someone says, "Why do we do this?", we have a document that says, "Here's the justification."
Separate personal and business.
So I think if I was gonna text on my phone...
It's not unusual to have a justification to spend money.
So this is my personal phone, but if I'm not mistaken, if I was gonna answer a text right here during this meeting, this phone now becomes public information. They can actually, because it's during a public meeting, in public forum, this phone now becomes available to whoever wants to see it, because that's, that's, I know that for a fact. That's one reason, is that...
Yeah, I don't know, if it's just that you're doing it in a meeting makes sense.
Well, during an open meeting, you can't. Remember that?
That you can address with business practices, too.
Right.
Or procedures.
If it is the point of where our cell phones can't get, you know, I got nothing to hide on my cell phone anyways, but I think it's, like you said, it's just unethical to have your personal phone be FOIA'd. I think it's just wrong to begin with. Okay, I'm fine with that, Mike. Susan's okay, she's the one that's kind of strong.
You okay with that?
Am I okay with just bringing it back? Okay, yeah, that's fine with me.
All right, look at it next month? All right, thank, thank you. Thanks, Susan. Sorry, Claire, I didn't see you come in, we could have moved your agenda item to the top of the list. Did you go to Washington already? Okay, do I even, okay. We're gonna bring up item seven K, which is Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Assignment Assumption of the Lease. Guess I can give a... So we've been, everybody's aware of what's been going on with Parks and Rec, and everybody knows how hard everybody's worked, especially on the two trustees, Mike Tremblay and Gary Cop. Pretty much had everything down at the bottom of the ninth, I think we were just about ready to cross the finish line, and then the Village of Romeo kind of threw a monkey, you mentioned, and said in the nineteen ninety-three lease that there was two guarantors that were on the lease, one signature from the Bruce Township, one signature from Washington Township. The guarantors are to basically state that if the Parks and Rec is dissolved, that the, the two townships would still be responsible for the upkeep and the maintenance of the building that is currently at three sixty-one Morton Street. So that's where it's at right now. So we did have, Bob Seifert went back to the drawing board and he did make a new amendment to our article that we put together, and that's what you guys have in front of you. And that's the Assignment Assumption of the Lease and the Village of Romeo Consent. So it needs to be approved by both boards and then it needs to be accepted by the Village of Romeo, so... I have the nineteen ninety-three lease, and anybody wants to take a look at it, shows... I have the nineteen ninety-three lease, and anybody wants to take a look at it, shows that the. Claire, did you have anything that you wanted to add, did you want to come up and?
No, I, well.
Claire Russell, the director of Parks.
You have the original lease?
I got a copy of the original lease, maybe.
Washington already considered this?
What's that?
Washington already considered this?
Can we ask how Washington voted on it?
They, they did not pass.
It did not pass?
For more discussion, or so that.
Is it a no vote, or is it going to be brought up at a later date?
It was a no.
You should come up to the podium, Claire, to be honest, so just state your name and make it official, please.
Hi, Claire Russell, Romeo, Washington, Bruce, Parks and Recreation Director. So at Washington, it was four-two, the vote, they voted it down, and the lawyer did explain that what could happen is that everybody would have to come together at a table and try to figure out a new lease, or what have you. Otherwise. Well, we don't know otherwise, do you know what I mean? I don't know how long we would be able to stay for Parks and Recreation. I mean, so Romeo, Bruce, and Washington, no matter what you vote, I would assume, is going to have to have communication with the village, and everybody's going to have to come to some type of agreement.
So that, you're talking about the lawyers, the same lawyer that we use, actually, here at Bruce Township, the same lawyer that's drawing up their contracts, our current agreements right now, which is Vierberg Blaski.
Right.
What if, I mean, this was the, Village of Romeo has brought this to our attention, I'm just going to ask you this, maybe you might have heard the question come out tonight, but if the Village of Romeo decides that we don't no longer need guarantors on the assignment, would our old approvals obviously would still be effective, then? Because we did already approve the, the current assignment.
The lawyer said that, the, the lease that is in place, or the existing lease, whether a new lease comes in, it's still the ninety-nine years right now. The question was brought up whether it was a legal entity, but then that was kind of pushed aside for a minute. But no matter what, if it is not passed, there's going to have to be some type of discussion or agreement, or a new contract is going to have to be made. So that's kind of where it's at.
We can't really use the old lease, because that was brought up by the Village of Romeo, because it's basically a change in names, and it states right in the contract, if there's any change in names or identity, the lease is no longer valid.
So then, no matter what, there's going to have to be a discussion with all three?
Are the?
Which that wasn't brought up, actually, that, that part of the contract.
Which part is that?
Which it would null and void the first agreement if, if there was a change in name. A change in name with the commission.
Assignment, I think it's an assignment is what they classify it as, if I'm not mistaken.
I can help with this, Mike, if you want.
What's that?
I can help with this, if you want.
Well, right now?
Yeah.
Sure, go right ahead, Mike.
So all the assets of the prior commission before we created the new commission, which is the recognized legal name under Michigan law, according to our attorney. So the existing lease is under the old commission. So an assignment needs to be agreed to, to assign the existing lease to the new entity. The issue that I have with the assignment as written is, one of the reasons on creating this entity is to, to limit the liability of the township, so the Parks and Rec liabilities do not extend back into the townships. By becoming a guarantor, we actually assume the lease, if Parks and, if the village doesn't get approved, and Parks and Rec goes away, we would be responsible for that building, the remainder of the lease and maintaining that building. That's not what the intent was, to create the new bylaws, the new bylaws were to create that legal entity that's recognized. Our responsibility is to provide the village money into that organization to fund it, and to, and to have commission members to help guide and direct the Parks and Rec Director and, and the activities. So I don't, do not support it as written, I support doing the lease assignment, but not with the township being a guarantor. Because of that risk that's created for us.
There's one more moving part, and I think it is, is basically the assets that are involved between Washington Township and Bruce Township's assets with the Parks and Rec. If the Parks and Rec does dissolve, the Village of Romeo will not receive one dime worth of assets into their bank account, and they're worried that the residents in the Village of Romeo will not get the benefits of Parks and Rec being dissolved, and the two townships would receive all the assets. So I know that was another.
The residents do, because half the residents live in Bruce, and half of them live in Washington, so that's not, that's not a valid argument.
That was my comment, truly, so, I mean, that's where this item came up, and like I said, we were at, we were basically at the five-yard line.
Yeah.
You know, and here we are, back to square one again.
Yeah. I'm okay with, with assignment, but not as a guarantor. Certainly not as a guarantor.
Well, it's in front of our board right now, to go ahead and prove it the way it is, or to, I mean.
I make a motion to reject the assignment as written.
The guarantor was on our original lease that we have, that you just looked at.
But with the new bylaws, we've created that legal entity, so that we would not put the townships at risk for Parks and Rec liabilities. And this puts us right in the middle of that.
I mean, if.
So, but we don't have a second, so.
I'll second anyway.
Yeah. Now we can have the further discussion, to weed it out.
Second discussion to reject a.
Yeah, this is, this is like if you were, if your teenage son or daughter got a car and you signed for it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you would be responsible if they couldn't make the payments. So what would this, this, this would obligate the townships to continue that lease in the event Parks and Rec goes away. Well, that building isn't placed for Parks and Rec, it's not in place for the individual townships. So, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
I mean, I can't.
It does from the, from my point, it makes sense from the village perspective, but it does create a risk to the townships.
I just can't believe that, you know, I mean, if the building became vacated, it, it, they would have no options for the building of the land, you know. And want to hold the townships liable. And then also the part about the monetary values or whatever, the assets. We got a motion on the floor, second by Lisa.
What's the motion?
To reject it as written.
Not to say it in the wrong way, I'm going to have to probably, you know, I'm probably going to have to go with the, Mike's, you know. Let's get a vote on it, I guess, so, I agree with you, Mike.
I, I think our vote doesn't mean anything, because if all three parties don't agree, and Washington doesn't agree, but we should, we should probably still vote.
Go ahead, Lisa, can we get a roll call, please?
Tremblay?
Yes.
Crafty?
Oh, wait, yes to reject. I don't want any confusion.
Crafty?
Yes.
Same as. Correct?
Yes.
To reject? Giorgio?
Yes, to reject?
Philbrook?
Yes, to reject.
Motion carries.
Sorry, Claire, I mean, I don't know what else to tell you, I mean, we, it's the Village of Romeo, we got to figure it out with them, and, you know, to.
Am I allowed to ask?
Yes, come on.
I think. So with these, both Washington and Bruce rejecting, are the boards going to? I mean, the important thing is that you all set a table and try to figure out a solution.
Right.
To this, because, again, it's our home, and our only home right now, with the exception of the rooms that we use at Washington Township, so. I mean. Like from the beginning, this is the township, this is your, you know.
So, I mean, I don't know about, I mean, there, there's, I mean, we did approve the, at the Parks and Rec, at the commission, at our last meeting, myself, and Dan DeKowsky approved to have the lease at the three sixty-one Morton Street. That's already been approved by both boards, primarily with the, throughout the articles, and I think it was also approved, or basically it was approved by the commission, and that was who needed to make the decision.
Right, it was just a name change, and then.
Guarantors, now, so.
But you guys didn't approve the actual assignment as written, you approved that it should be assigned.
So we have another meeting, obviously, tomorrow night, Lisa will be there.